My caller being north, everybody stand. I'm going to ask the auditor, please.
Let's begin. United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say a thank you, Father. I want to thank you for allowing us all to be here tonight. Father, I ask that you allow us to have this meeting in your way and allow us to make the sound decisions for the betterment of our life city. In our sin, in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody here. We'll start with the roll call. Mr. Marion Betts?
Here.
Alderman Doray?
Present.
Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman McCoy? No, McCoy is absent. Alderman Probst?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call. Okay. We are, before we get started, I was supposed to read this last time, but this is a thank you to Tracy Dean with the Woodman of the World. They donated a new and larger American flag for City Hall and that's the one you see flying out there, so I want to thank them for doing that. That was awful, awful nice of them to do that. Also, when we had our fishing event out at the city pond, they also brought a trailer that there is their disaster trailer and they brought water and stuff. It was really, really nice of them and I really thank them for doing that and reaching out for it. Okay. In front of you have the amendments from previous meeting. If you've had a chance to see those, if you can, if I can have a motion to approve those amendments. Motion by Alderman Betts, I hear a second. Statement by Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now may I ask our auditor, Mr. Deborah Moak, to give us a financial report?
Okay. This month I provided you a balance sheet as of August 31st, 2017, which gives you the total of all the assets, liabilities, and the fund balances for each of the funds. Thought this was a good report to, a financial statement to provide since it shows where we are at this point in time on August 31st. And then I also have in your packet, a statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balances for the two months ending August 31st, which has the actual numbers there and a combined total for each of the funds. It does show a net loss after the expenditures reduces, after the revenues less the expenditures of a 1.7 million. This is because the hydro royalties for the first quarter of this new fiscal year has not been accrued. I didn't know at the time how much it would be. Now I do know that it should be 2.5 million when we get it in November and that would be for July, August, and September. And the next report that I provided is a budget to actual summary by fund type for the two months, which shows the actual to budget comparison and the variance, whether favorable or unfavorable. It's a condensed form, so I thought that was a good report to provide since it does kind of, you're not looking at all the detail. At the last page of that report shows the total actual to total budgeted amounts, which are, like I said earlier, I think our total revenues are 3.2 million, our expenditures are 5 million, for a net change in position of 1.75, a negative. And then the last part of the packet that I gave you was the detail behind all the numbers, which this report was provided to the department heads for their review and so that they can also see where they're at, but it's in a much more detailed format. There has not been no change in operations at the present time to require a change in the budget or amend the budget, so everything still, we're going as planned in our budget. We are currently working on, or I am, the written policies and procedures manual for the town for all the functions of the accounting throughout the entire town, but there's something required for, by the legislative auditors. Silas Simmons was supposed to have come last month about this time, but they didn't come, but they're supposed to start Monday with their fee. And as time goes by, I plan to continue to work on improving these financial statements so that you can make good decisions and have the information that you need to make those. That's it.
Just a few comments on Derrick. You heard say that the expenditure to our revenues normally, she will approve our hydro royalty by month and that would have been in a favorable position where it would have showed, you know, income rather than a loss because we haven't actually received a check. We received that royalty payment on November 1st and that conflicted flip-flop. She went ahead and didn't have those figured when she did the statements and said, wanted to go ahead and get them out, but they are in a positive posture, so just wanted to make sure you know that. Also, the Silas Simmons, I did visit with Wes Gore and he said that they are running a little bit behind getting here. I want to make sure he felt like that he could get our report out on time. He said he doesn't see a problem with that. In fact, he sees them wrapping up by 1st of December with that. He said, because last time I spent Christmas up here trying to work on this report to get that out in a timely manner, so he said he didn't want to go through that again. But just from the information he's seen and heard, he's really encouraged about the work that we've done on that. So, any other comment, any other comment or question for Miss Moak? Okay. Thank you Derrick. All right. Moving on to number two, occupational license. The first one is Gary Call Webb, the life long resident of the day. He's, looks like he's going to have an LLC and he's a professional land surveyor and asking for an occupational license. No signed application is submitted. Of course, you know, being a surveyor who works out at his home. Any questions? Is Gary here? I see. Any questions from the Alderman? They are motioning to grant this occupational license?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, I hear a second.
Second.
Made by Alderman Probst, all in favor? Okay. Second one is Perfusion Vascular Lab of Bidet. That's Ryan Regos, Regos? Is he here? Okay. That's the direct administration. That is the, as you know, that's our, the hospital there and it's in that unit there where the Tillman group is now.
He's, he was formerly the wound care.
Wound care.
They're doing the same thing.
So, he's asked for an occupational license. I hear a motion we accept this.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, I hear a second. Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have an outdoor sign application by Laurie Tamali, who, if y'all know, last time she was, didn't have a sign ready and you'd have a copy of it there. Are there any questions?
Application seems to be incomplete. When it talks about type of construction to be used and height from ground to bottom of sign, while it was approved by Mr. Al Webb and I'm assuming that's, is it miscapped? It's initial down at the bottom. Do we know what the sign is going to be made of? Does it, does it meet the standards?
I think she already handed it out. When I passed, I already seen.
This is out. Oh. The same image is already out there. I didn't actually go over to look at it, but I seen it.
Yeah.
It's hung on the building.
It's hung on the building?
It's in the ground. It's like on the ground? It's like on the low. L-shaped deal. It looks fine to me.
Any other question? I mean, before approval yesterday, you wanted to get the rest of the information on it? We can certainly require you to do.
No, I'm, I'm assuming Mr. Al Webb probably went out and looked at it since it's already out there.
But it, I think it's constructed out of wood, to be honest with you. Painted. I mean, it's, I don't know if it did the sign and I don't want to say it was done professionally, but I mean, it is of.
I just noticed that there were blanks on the application, but was approved. No, they approved it by sign. I was just curious about that.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Doray, I hear a second. Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next thing, I'm actually, this is a pad on the back to our, our utility department, you know. As many of you know, we own all of our own utilities and I recently got back from New Orleans and I promise you, I got there to the hotel and you couldn't brush your teeth. You had to have water, you had to buy water to brush your teeth for two days. Couldn't. They did tell you it's okay to shower, but anyway, we are really blessed in the city to have a water department and a utility office that we've got. And I, this is a, this came from the State Louisiana Department of Health, came by certified mail to us and this is the tax one sanitary survey for our public water system. It was, there were no violations whatsoever. Matter of fact, it was really a, a really good report that we're, that I just wanted to read this and give notice and recognition to Mark and all of his people that work with him were doing a good job. Also, last night, many of you know that our power went out and we were attacked last night by two raccoons that got in our substation and knocked power out. And within 30 minutes, crews had our power back up all over town. And I think that them as well as all of our departments do a good job and a lot of time goes overlooked, but this is, this is, this is something we all take for granted, but to be able to drink our water and not have to worry about boiling it, brush your teeth, that says a lot and that's, that means a lot to the people. Thank y'all. Amen. Okay. We have opening bids for our, we have some city vehicles that we are going to, I have a list. I'm going to see, can I write these down next to which one? This is from William Bradford on Alabama Avenue, Fairdy. He bid $300 for the 2002 Chevy Ventura van. It's $200, $300. $300. Okay. And the women. Okay. The next bid is given by Crystal Durham of Watkins Auto in Purvis, Mississippi. On the 2006 Ford F-350 van, they bid $77. On the 1997 Ford F-250, they bid $77. On the 1997 Ford F-250, bid number 065. And on the 1994 Chevrolet pickup, $137. This is some, this is expensive stuff. Okay. This bid is by Kevin Davis of Fairdy, Louisiana, and it's for the 2002 Chevrolet Ventura van and it's $325. Our account's going to really go up when we get all these money. This is a bid on the 1998 Ford F-250 from George Latham and he bids $526 on the 1998 Ford F-250. $526. I'd like to ask, but how'd he come up with that dollar? How'd you get $526?
He talked to somebody and bid $525.
Here's a bid on the 1998 Ford F-250. And this is also coming from Kevin Davis in Fairdy, $250. And this is a bid on the 19, it was the 1998 Ford F-250. This is on the 98 GMC Sierra pickup from Christian Christina Latham, excuse me, and that's, and she bid $676 and 80 cents. We have one more. This is on the 1998 GMC pickup and it's from Gary Whitley, $465. Now, that being all the bids, did we have bids on each piece? We do have bids on each item. Of course, a couple of other items were $77. Do we want to accept these bids? I would recommend we do it. Some of these really are worth probably about $77. We do not have any kind of insurance on them. We didn't have, we dropped a lot, one of the things, a lot of the vehicles, we dropped the insurance on them that had been carried over liability year to year. We save thousands of dollars by just insuring and carrying liability on those vehicles that are actually running and being used. I hear a motion we accept these bids.
I'm making a motion we accept a bid.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, I hear a second. Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Number six is the, we introduced a revised city ordinance of 664 last month and this is the time when we have a public hearing on the blind properties. There were some changes made to it, but I need to have a motion to go into public, public meeting for the, for the discussion of these particular rules.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Doray, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Betts. We are now in public session, public hearing for the city ordinance on the blind properties. Any questions from the public? Basically what this did, we just changed some verbiage in it and this should complete it. And Bill, you want to elaborate? We're ready to go after this completion of this?
Shortly, I think.
Okay.
We've got to get our hearing officer to review our notice format to make sure we're covering everything properly legally and that should just take a few days and we'll be sending notices out.
Did you know, public comment? Do I hear a motion we close public hearing? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, I hear a second.
Second.
Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number seven, last month we introduced the adoption of the ordinance for municipal officer salaries and this is the adoption night and we opened public meeting on it as well, so...
Mr. Mayor, you closed the public hearing, but I didn't hear anybody.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Call a vote.
So, do I hear a motion that we accept, adopt the ordinance test?
I'll make that.
Alderman, I hear a second. Alderman Doray, second. Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Glad you're awake. Okay. Out of number seven, public hearing adopts the ordinance to be just along with salary. Same thing, we're going to have to open a public hearing. Do I hear that motion? Motion by Alderman Gardner?
Second.
Second by Alderman Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
And now a public hearing. Any comments from the public on municipal officer salaries?
Buzz, can you read? The ordinance asks you to propose a revision?
Well, it's not a revise, Ray. It's actually the, basically it's, it's to fix the compensation of the mayor, Alderman clerk, and the chief of police of the town of the day and if it fits to your pleasure, do you want it read?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Bid ordained by the mayor and board of Alderman of the town of the day in regular session duly convened as a government authority of seven municipalities at once. Section one, this proposed ordinance was previously introduced at a regular meeting of September 12th, 2017. And section two, after due notice of advertising of this proposed ordinance, went official journal on the 27th of September, 2017, in public hearing held at the mayor and board's regular meeting on the 10th day of October, 2017. It is hereby ordained and adopted as an ordinance of the town of the day of Louisiana that, whereas LSA RS 33404.1 provides that the board of Alderman shall by ordinance fix the compensation of the mayor, Alderman clerk, and chief of police. Therefore, bid ordained by the mayor and board of Alderman of the town of the day of Louisiana that the term of the office commencing July 1st, 2016, the compensation of the aforementioned municipal officer is fixed as follows. The compensation for the mayor is fixed at $82,940 per year. The compensation for Alderman and the Alderman is fixed at $8,424 per year. The compensation for the clerk is fixed at $75,478 per year and the compensation for the chief of police is fixed at $72,410. The foregoing ordinance was read and considered section by section and as a whole, and voted their own was as follows. That's average.
That is the current salaries, so, adjustments from past to now, right?
Right. That's correct. That's, that's what they were when we took it off. Any other questions? Okay. I hear a motion we close public hearing?
I get one.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, I hear a second. Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Now I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
That was kind of together, but Alderman Gardner was making a motion, second by Alderman Betts, all in favor?
Aye.
Out of number eight, request for a variance on the sales of alcohol and beverages at the Riverfront Event and this, I assume is the balloon race weekend on the Riverfront and Janice Summerall is here from Jojo Drive Through and she's asking for a variance so she can sell the alcohol beverages at the Riverfront to that particular event. So, any questions from Alderman?
Current, there's current in the ordinance that provided, that's the reason why she's asking for a variance.
Well, right, that's correct. As y'all know, we had a, granted a, you know, they had a concert here recently and there was a benefit that was granted and they, you can suspend by vote, you know, I mean by vote, positive vote, that you can suspend that particular ordinance for, you know, a request for that and it will strictly be restricted to the person that's asking for for them to get it, so.
So what type of alcohol?
Alcohol. Do you want to speak to that, Janice? Would you like to say, what are you planning on selling?
Well, we normally sell beer, any kind of daiquiris. If that's all y'all want us to sell, that's what we'll do. We do have available the mixed drinks. I have a catering license that allows me to do that and we have, my grandson will be there to make sure that all IDs are checked because we don't want any problems. We don't allow it in our business and we don't want it, especially there, you know.
Monitoring the people who are drinking? I know that was one of the comments that I made to the person who gets the last one, monitoring those people as they come back.
Right. Yeah. Sam, which is John Cowan's wife, will be the one that's running the bar and we don't, if they come through our drive thru and they've had too much to drink, we refuse them because we have children that's out on that road, grandchildren, and we don't want any problems. So, you know, we just want people happy, to have a good time, but we don't, we don't like a thing but John's either.
Any questions?
What, what time does the, does the Riverfront Event close? It's not a...
Well, it's basically the flea market, I think, is, is that, is that, were you planning on having it, Janice?
Yeah, it's at the, at the, that's, with my understanding that we could have a, may could have a booth. We were told at first that we could have a booth at the flea market and then they told us we would need to come here and make sure it was okay because of the ordinance in the past.
So we have like operational hours from, to, on that particular weekend?
That would you add to it?
Yes. Well, I wouldn't want to do it on Sunday. I know they're going to be open on Sunday, but we don't want to do it on Sunday. We just want to do it Friday night and, you know, a decent time, Saturday to Saturday night.
I've never gone to the flea markets. I guess I have, but I haven't been there. I think the flea market's basically closed down. I don't have...
Around midnight. In previous years when we done it, we shut down around 10 o'clock. We shut our booth down about 10 o'clock because after that, you're kind of asking for trouble. I think the flea market does close around 10 o'clock.
I didn't notice that happening that late.
Did I make that motion that we approved it for that one, that one day per, for those two days of the weekend?
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, I hear a second. Okay. Request fails for a last of a second.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to number nine. We're going to strike this. It was asking for the board approval for collecting sales tax and use tax for Bidet Riverfront. However, there's still some work that has not been done yet as far as getting some paperwork done and also some of the stuff that was presented that needs to be changed. We found that, council brought it to our attention earlier, that was an important thing that needs to be changed, so we're going to strike that from, from the agenda today.
The motion will be tabled out until the necessary information is provided.
Okay. Motion made to table it, I hear a second.
Second.
They, they, Alderman Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 11, it's been brought to our attention now and I, I've gotten this, you know, as y'all know, we get inmates that do a lot of our grass cutting around town.
We sit in...
Pardon?
It's just a...
Okay, I'm sorry. Number 10, discussion of board of Alderman, I'm sorry, didn't do that on purpose. Discussion of board of Alderman, conversation for special meetings of city council. Who wants to take that up?
I'll take it up. I feel like every other city is compensated for any special meeting, especially when you have to leave your job and come, and I know as the Alderman is our job to come, but if you have to leave a second job and miss work, then you should be compensated for that, that day that you missed at your primary job. So, I feel like that's something that we do need to put in place. I think it was mentioned a while back when we were in the process of saying, do we think we should stay, the Alderman should stay where we are or should we just be compensated for any additional meeting that we have to attend?
Any other questions or remarks?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I got two. Ray, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I just wanted, well, this is open to the public making a comment. You just, you just approved the establishment of the salary level for the board of Alderman, so it seems a little premature now to discuss another increase in pay for them. Also, I believe it might violate the state law regarding the timeframe of when the board of Alderman can set a new salary for themselves. I believe you have to, if you increase your salary, you have to wait until the next term of office, the next year or year.
Ray, I'm not going, I'm not going to say that's not right. I will say this is just for discussion. They've, I was asked to put this on for discussion. I think some municipalities do, when they do have special sessions, they do pay their Alderman monies to, you know, to show up. Now, it's, it's, again, it's the pleasure of the, of the Alderman, what they want to do is they, they set policy and it's up to them what they want to do. However, I do know that even though that it was just, we just adopted an ordinance that got us in compliance, that we should have done over a year ago, we should have done that. This, this request would require an amendment to that because it does increase that and we would have to actually amend that by ordinance. I would think our council, correctly, would we, would we amend that by ordinance or would we do that in our resolution?
That's correct. You have to, you have to amend it by an ordinance.
So, they would require...
You have to prefile it, you know, let it lay over, have a hearing, go through the ordinance procedure.
Right. You know, that's, again, that's up to the Alderman and just like, if they want to do it, it would require an amendment to the existing ordinance, so you'd have to go through the process, you would make the request and then you would, the next meeting you would have, you know, the public hearing and the discussion. That's, that's how it should be done. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, tonight, we just, again, this is for discussion. I think maybe get the pulse of the, of the Alderman, other Alderman if they want to and also maybe some comment from you as far as how you feel. And also maybe some comment from you as far as how you feel about that. You know, that's, what we do. Bill?
It appears to be that y'all here to serve or be served simply that. You'll already make eighty-two hundred dollars to eighty-five hundred dollars a year as elected official. We have non-employee people making a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars on benefits. And Mr. Ray has already made about twenty-two thousand dollars on extra benefits. Twenty-two thousand dollars, that's insurance paid for barely. But that's another burden. We have a road plan we have to pay for that was negotiated. I'm hiring y'all coming on. We had to build a parking lot, it's expensive. The convention center cost us. This is another add-on to expensive Bideia. The people of Bideia need a break. We've, we've gone on and on about expenses and all that. And after a while, it's gotta stop somewhere. You agreed to come to work for eighty-two to eighty-four hundred, I think, forty, you just said. And if you have to come up here and inconvenience yourself, you need to quit the job.
Amen.
Another question?
How much would you determine a dollar amount for compensation? What would y'all be asking for? Two dollars an hour, twenty an hour?
Well, I'm sweating on company, I mean, that's, I don't know.
Four dollars an hour, that.
Thank you, Bill.
How many hours do you have to work a week?
What do you got?
As far as I, I'm concerned, a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred fifty dollars for any additional, that's roughly about the same thing that any other city in this local area will pay their alderman to come to special meetings. I did my research and then...
A hundred fifty per meeting or a hundred fifty total for the year?
A hundred and fifty per meeting.
Y'all giving up your other salary to do this? Giving up all your other benefits to do this?
That's them.
Yeah, I don't think they should have to give up their other, uh, salary. And I don't think it's, it's nothing wrong with them getting paid extra if they have to come in for a meeting. I think if you was sitting up there, you would want the same pay.
We, the voters, voted for him because everybody said they were gonna cut, 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 cut. You got elected. And we are watching and we are listening. If you want to suspend another term up there, you better be careful.
But we, I will say this, this administration board, we have cut. We have cut, seriously.
Listen, I'm sorry, I ain't back.
And, uh, we, I just, I just want to say that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying far against whatever. I'm just saying that we have, if we promise that, we have cut a lot. And I'd be glad to show anybody on, on, on paper where we've cut. And this has been pretty substantial.
How much did we get for insurance?
Pardon?
How much is insurance per person, per year?
It depends on whether they have family coverage or...
How much was Ms. Dora?
Pardon?
How much wasn't to cover Ms. Dora? And she didn't have experience. She was talking about cutting your, uh, salary because you wasn't experienced at the last one.
You're mistaken. I, I would like to correct you. I did not say that at the last meeting. I never said that.
Y'all was talking about cuts, using notes in the papers.
That's exactly right. And it was redacted the next day because that was, that is an incorrect statement. Just, just to clarify.
There was a statement thrown out.
Right, but, but again, it was not by me. And, and Mr. McDonald, just so, since you mentioned my name, I'd like to go ahead and say that I am not for this. I'm not for getting paid special. I knew what the salary was, I knew what the benefits were when I ran for office. I, I'm not for an increase in pay at all. So my name was mentioned because I have the health insurance, which was a benefit that was already in place when I decided to run. And when I put my name on that ticket, I knew what the pay scale was and what the benefits were, which was why I decided to run. I am not in any way asking for any additional compensation. So I wanted to go record a statement of that. Since my name was mentioned, I want to make my intentions very clear.
Okay, just to, okay.
I'd like to say, if you remember last meeting, I think we were trying to take a ten percent deduction in our salary to what I was for.
That's what, that's what you said.
I know that's what you said.
That is what I said.
I know that's what you said.
All right, this, this...
I just want you to know where I stand on that too.
Where, where were those funds come from, the budget that's already...
It'd be, it'd be in the budget. I mean, it'd have, look, I, I, I think it's been brought up. I think what we can do is have discussions amongst, we can have office discussions with... From what I'm hearing, some of the aldermen saying, I hadn't heard Alderman Betts comment one way or another. We, I think we need to discuss this and bring it back if, if, one at a time. We come back and they feel like they want to do that, we'll, they can present the ordinance. And then the next meeting, have a public hearing to adopt it or whatever, then it'll be discussed then. Let's move on tonight, y'all agree?
But I would definitely suggest that you alderman, don't quit your primary job for an eighty-four hundred dollars a year job. I would suggest that.
Okay, all right, now we'll move on to number eleven. This is something that we're, we're gonna be facing here. And I'm glad Cedric here tonight, and Fort Lee's here, and I'll bring the sanitation. But we, we're having a situation come up. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but the state of Louisiana is going to be releasing, I think, what? Fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand inmates that are, are non-violent, defend, uh... Criminals that, you know, have been working some of these work crews. But when they release them, the only thing that's gonna be available are people who might not want on the streets. We're just, I'm throwing this out to start the discussion. This is gonna happen in November, is that correct, Lee?
Yeah, November.
And also, I, I asked Cedric to come tonight because there are some things with having inmates on the street that we don't ever hear these stories till I got Cedric in the room and, and heard some of these stories. And they're pretty frightening. As you know, that there's a lot of telephone calls. And think about this, how hard it is to police three or four men on a highway. If they can contact their family and say, hey, look, I'm gonna be over on the highway by sprint mark. Go put something in their cover for me there and I, you know, you can't, that's something you can't catch. So imagine, use your imagination of the things that can float from these inmate crews that are where they're at. Another problem is, it's really costing the town a lot of money and time to send four or five vehicles to go pick them up, wait for them, get them, bring them back. And by the time they get started and back on their equipment and service to get them going, and those that do know how to run the equipment or those that don't train them, you're not getting very much production. And I'll be honest with you, I, I really think that we should investigate looking at combining these guys and also getting some permanent or part-time help to work on these, these units. Now, I think Alderman Doray asked me last year to get bids on having some commercial people cut grass. I think that's a good idea, we will be doing that as well. The first thing I want to do is I want to get with Lee and also all of our grass cutting people and identify those areas that are having to be cut. So if somebody come and give a bid, they can give a, a legitimate bid. And we're gonna explore all those options. And I just, I'm putting that out there for discussion. So I just want the people to be aware of it. Because if you see in November that those preservers were not getting this video or eating, that's full of things that we're facing. And I, I entertain any questions at the alderman right now. I don't want to go public with this. I just have to, Alderman, is anything else they would like to consider?
Well, I've talked to Cedric today for a while and he told me he was gonna share a few things.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would love to.
Out there, but also one other thing I'd like to say is, and I've talked to him about this before. I know I couldn't grab, zero turns, cut a lot, but a tractor with a finishing mower, bush mower, can cut a lot more in certain areas that they're cutting. So I, you know, we discussed about using bigger equipment with more cutting power. And again, that's something we need to look at investing into, more, better equipment to cut the crops. And Lee, your thoughts on that?
Oh, yeah, I agree with you, you know, the bigger the back wing or the bigger the grooming mower in the back, you know, it's, it's definitely a, a time saver.
There's a lot of areas that you can cut with that, with zero turns.
Yeah, our, our Riverfront alone, you know, that's, that's like...
Now, the back seat paraplane, back row, highway.
Yep.
There are a lot of places.
The highway's gonna be a different issue because the state has a program where we get, we actually get compensated for cutting the highway. So that's gonna be a little different issue there.
I just want to bring that up. But Cedric said he wanted to share.
Yeah, Cedric, I, I...
He can give his firsthand experience of what's taking place out with some of the people here.
Tell, tell them your typical day of being on the...
Well, well, see, a lot of people, I've been doing it ten years now. A lot of people ride by and see us with those fellows. Some of the fellows ain't never done nothing like that. Some of the fellows, they come out of the house at night. And you get one, you gotta train it. You may keep them a week or two weeks, then they transfer them. And then we got to watch them. Get five, we got to watch them. Then they'll take, just somebody go by at night, drop dope, a cell phone's out and baby diaper, ball it up, throw it on the ground like a dirt diaper. I'm telling you, I found two cell phones, they even my grandkids, I know what I'm talking about. But, but it's not easy like y'all think it is. It is really rough though, then, mate. The other day, we shook my truck down a month ago, I found two knives on my backseat. A shank in the night. He would get, the narcotics raid our truck a month ago. And found mojo on dealer's truck. Somebody had brought it out here overnight, stuck it in their lawn mower. The guy got on lawn mower.
Cent代 marijuana is what it is.
It's just cent代 marijuana. They smoke and they get high. We pick them up in the morning, they vomiting at the mouth, they already high. They're liable to the city. We got to watch them go out in the highway, I could go on and on. But I suggest Bud that, he talked about hiring some part-time people. I'm retiring in May, but I'm coming back part-time. Hiring part-time people to cut the grass. Because I do the highway, it's a whole different thing than doing the Riverfront. You got cars and all kind of stuff out there. But the, the inmate thing, it's just far over it. We used to have five, we may have one, we may have two, we may not have none now. And November's gonna get even worse. So y'all got to think about hiring some people for this stuff. And most of the summer, this whole summer, we had five inmate crews and most crews had one, maybe two inmates the whole summer. And we went for probably a month where two inmate crews didn't have any, we couldn't get anybody because it was just a, a, a problem with the facility, getting the guys. They have to go through a ten-step process to get over and get out. And it takes a while to do that. So it's just, it's just, like Cedric said, it's not as easy as everybody thinks. You just go over and get some guys and start cutting grass.
And we need to, another thing that I'll tell you is they're, they're, they have no loyalty to that equipment.
And, and, and see, we got hired people that's gonna be accountable for cutting grass. You can hold me accountable, but I got five inmates that could care less. All they want to do is get out here and get able to get what they need to get. They could care less. They'll tell me, say, Mr. Moore ain't doing none, I can't do none, I can't make them do none. But take them back in and get me another one, maybe he'll work and maybe he won't, it's all...
The other days of, of the change gangs and the working the dead, that's...
It's over with. They're not gonna lock them up, they're not gonna punish them none. I'll take them back and fire one, the next day he'd be on the crew of third.
Bill, your comment?
I did, recreational park in particular, they used to bid it out, it was usually about ten thousand a year in the old park. Now we're paying two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year and benefit the people who cut the grass. So I think if you bid all this out, you'd be surprised, there's a lot of people who cut the grass professionally and they'd be really competitive.
We wouldn't have to add the expense of employees and benefits.
And turn the Recreation District back to the Recreation District and let them volunteer.
We, what we have to do is identify those areas. We have to identify those areas getting cut and let them come in and say...
You can do Riverfront is one, Reg Park is another, let them handle that.
Okay, that was a discussion. We will, we will move forward and start working on that. That's just for information, so.
But it was a good discussion.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing it. A lot of people didn't know what he wanted to do there.
No, it's, I can't... Not only that, when they get there and they get there on the mower, one of them has to go to the bathroom, and you download them up and...
Download them all up. And so, so you bring them back, do it and say, you know, I gotta go too.
But thank you, Cedric, we appreciate that, appreciate you. All right, number, number twelve, board approval resolution to adopt Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan for two thousand seventeen. What that is, is, you know, feeling all those government organizations for you to receive monies and payments or reimbursements, like for example, what we do with the bike flood or spending money on that. You have to, you have to have adopted a hazard mitigation plan and have it approved. And that's basically what we're doing. As a municipality, we don't have our own individual plan. So we are, basically, we are adopting the parish plan or our mitigation plan. And that enables us to receive any kind of reimbursements on our funds by adopting this at the parish. So that's basically what it is, is I need a resolution for us to adopt this mitigation plan for the city of Bideia. If any other questions on that, I'll be glad to pay those at this time. Motion made by Alderman Betts that we adopt it? Your second, second by Alderman Pro, all in favor? All right. Number thirteen, discuss door-to-door sales with the city limits. I think everybody's recently had the guys come around setting the security systems and you throw their names to everybody. And, uh, I think that's something that Alderman Betts has got some good ideas on that I think we should consider. I'm John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you talk.
When the, you think, you should see two ordinances, the last ordinance is five fifty-five. That passed in June of nineteen eighty-seven when the state got out of the occupational license business and then gave the municipalities and police sheriffs the opportunity to collect occupational license for businesses and itinerary vendors. In the, in that section under peddlers, we, in the city of Bideia, we do have the peddlers are allowed. Itinerant vendors are allowed. The other ordinance to that is referred to, if you look up on the municipal code, it's a, it's an ordinance, four thirteen, which specifically addressed door-to-door solicitations, which outlawed basically. Well, I'm under the impression by reading what the ordinance says when they adopted it in nineteen eighty-seven, that that ordinance was repealed by the adoption of the new ordinance. With that being said, under the peddler's license, it just, it very vague. It just says you got to, you have to have a license, costs you a hundred dollars. Well, under that section, I'd like for us to amend our ordinance for peddlers with some restrictions. I would like for us to restrain door-to-door solicitations to a certain time of day, so many days. You know, whether it's Monday through Friday, whatever. The problem that we have now in some of these things, they come on Saturdays and Sundays when, when I think nobody's looking. And so I think that we need, under that section three, the peddler, we need to put some regulations. And so I'm asking that we develop some regulations for the itinerary solicitor. And adopt that as part of our, our ordinance, which will require limits, time limits. It also is limited to an individual salesman, meaning a company just can't buy a one-time license or he's got three guys that come out there. Each individual salesman is licensed. And the, we have his, right now, we get his driver's license and identif, identification, which is put on that license. And if our policeman called and somebody turned it in, he chose his license, well, if that's not the person on that license, then he, he has to quit. He has to go or he has to seek to get his own license before he can do this. So I just think we need to put some regulations in, into that. I'll be honest with you, I don't like door-to-door solicitations. I hate it when they knock on my door asking for something. I mean, I don't mind kids asking for chocolate every once in a while, school sales, but I really don't like door-to-door salesmen. But we can't stop it, but we can regulate it. There are some court cases that said that you can, you can regulate them, but not to the point where they can't do business. I think we need to put some regulations into the ordinance concerning itinerary vendors.
You brought up a good point about like children, how's that going to affect them?
Well, like I said, it's...
It'd be the same thing, basically?
Basically, it's the same thing. Basically, it's the same thing.
So if my son wants to sell cookie dough for the school, he's got to come to city home with a license?
Well, well, I'm telling you, it's a, if you're going, if you're gonna take anything to an extreme, uh, you, you can do that. But primarily, this is, this is designed for those who, whose business would seek, like, security systems.
Cell phone, remember that day at Co.
Yeah, yeah.
They would camp out down there selling cell phone.
One of the things, and I, I, and I think that's a good point, and, you know, where you draw the line at, and I, and I, I for one, I agree with Sabrina, I think our kids, you know, raising, having fundraisers, showing them responsibility. I think that is something that shouldn't be included in it. However, I think it's a safety issue. I know my dad has, well, opened, he's, he's so kind-hearted, no matter what they're selling, he's gonna let them in the door, or get in the door, and they're gonna, you know, they're gonna do their sale job on him. And it's just, it's just a shame. I mean, I even had a guy, I was having, here recently, the, the, the security guy, the security system guy was real pushy with me. I had family there, uh, he said, "Well, ain't gonna take the twenty minutes." I said, "I ain't got two minutes, I ain't got one minute." I, I've got family here with eating, and, you know, well, I've got all the, you know, he just, really. But I feel like if we had somebody like that, modify the police department, we could also put them on our web, website, so people can go and, and look, go on Facebook, go and see, put them on our Facebook post, people who are, have received their permit. And if y'all pull them up, they're not on there, don't talk to them. But if it is legal to do, and they can go through the necessary permit, and I agree with John, we need to have restrictions to where we can protect you in event or somebody coming by selling something that's gonna sell you building goods. And I just think that's a safety feature part of our town, especially our elderly people who aren't able to maybe cop themselves out of a pushy person, that we can make sure that people walk around knocking on your door, it's somebody that's legit. And I, I think that's a good thing. I think we need to explore that, and I think, that'd be something we can maybe have a, you know, work through as, as committee, a committee of the aldermen to come up with some prescriptions. Are y'all good with that?
Like the cookie dough or whatever?
And yeah, I think we should, I think, I think even though that, I think, and maybe to take a step further, if there is a fundraiser that a school is doing, still go through the same process to get approval, and we'll have them on Facebook. You might, they might not get the kid to come by, but you might wanna call and say, "Hey, look, y'all send your child by, I wanna give them." I might help them rather than be at the turn. So it's, it's, we're talking about all these things. I think I'd like to do a committee of, of, of a couple of aldermen that wanna do that. We'd be glad to sit down and work out some restrictions, so if you, y'all want to volunteer for that, just let me know, and we'll, we'll start on it, by the way. Okay, let's go on down to number fourteen. We're getting close, this, y'all know, we might, this been the quickest meeting now. Discussion of city-owned property adjacent to Riverside Baptist Church. Y'all know this is something we started several months ago. Uh, the Riverside Baptist Church has reached out to us about the property dr- uh, direct, uh, directly behind them. Uh, they're willing to expand their church, and I think that is a, a good viable church in that area. Uh, however, there were some things that we were required to get appraised. We just got the appraisal. Appraisal, let's come back. I feel like it's excessive. I don't feel like the property's worth what the appraisal says it is. It's less than an acre, and it's basically scrub brush, it's between the church property, and the property goes up to the edge and approval and property. Uh, we had an appraisal of twenty-two thousand for that. And I just, we feel like that's excessive. We discussed it, uh, before the meeting, I discussed it with council. Uh, and we, we talked a lot, about a lot of different options. When you're dealing with that, or if dealing with town property, you still have to be very careful. And we've got to follow procedure, and make sure we do the things we're supposed to do with that. So, uh, some of the discussions we had was, just like with our other properties, is, that were fixed to sell, we asked for appraisal about, we had to keep coming back and amending the ordinance to how we could sell it. I'd like to get this right the first time, so I would just be curious to see what other ideas the aldermen have as part of dealing with this property. And also involve council in the discussion as well.
Wasn't this the property that originally we were planning to donate today?
If we could, right.
Yeah, we were originally planning on just donating it to-
Right.
The property on John Glen, it appraised at like thirty-five hundred, is that John Glen?
John Glen, thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred. Is it substantially smaller than this one?
Yeah.
This is just a lot of, y'all know.
Yeah.
This is not quite, I think it's point nine-two, ninety-two tenths of an acre, ninety-three tenths of an acre. I have the appraisal here, by the way, if it's, uh, it is-
I think it's bad, he's a-
Who did the appraisal?
Pardon?
Who did the appraisal?
Uh, Ms. Wilson. Uh-
He did her appraisal.
Well, you know, one of the things that, now, I will say this, I will say this, a lot of times, anytime you're, you're having an appraisal, or just being making bids years ago, you had to do comparables. And if you didn't have a good comparable, you had to reach outside of that area and go find comparables. And so it's not really, you know, it's not a good comparison, it's really not. But you still have to sum up that appraisal to comparables based on a, uh, selling price, or a best-use price, and a bunch of different factors that probably brought that up. But, you know, I, I really feel like that's, that's excessive. And I, I, I guess, I'm asking for direction from-
My question is this, if someone out there, twenty-two thousand dollars, did you, do you have to bid it? I mean, would you have to get that legally, would you have to put that out there?
There's no requirement that you sell it at the appraised value.
You're right, okay.
And, you know, the board has the, the authority to-
But anybody would have the option to bid it out, right, is what you're saying. Not just, not just them.
He's asking, do we have to put this up for bids, or can we make an offer, like, can we set a price to sell it for?
I don't think you have to get everything.
You don't have to.
Can we sell it for a dollar?
Nope.
Well, we got dollar leases for ninety-nine years, I just thought perhaps we could sell it for-
It makes sense, it sounds like you could do that.
But going back to the, when you go land, you have to get an appraisal, that's, you know, that's part of it. But it doesn't require that it sell for the appraised value.
Right.
And, and the board has the authority to take their experience into account, talk to people, get some documentation about what people would feel, think about values, and then make a jud- judgment, and decide what you wanna sell it for.
So you said, you said no to my joke about the dollar, but is there a minimum?
No, that, well, here we go with reasonable.
Okay.
You know?
Can I ask a question to put about a long-term, long-term lease for a real low figures of about a lot?
Not a million, at least for a dollar.
Once again, the dollar would, would kill that, because that's, that's not a reasonable amount of money.
And you don't want it to be special. I mean, if somebody else really wanted that piece of property, they would have paid twenty-two thousand dollars for it. I mean, I just feel like they ought to be able to get that piece of property for twenty-two thousand dollars. I mean, yeah, I mean, they could have it, but that's no different than when-
And then we're backing up-
Vance had their property across the street from Furti Baptist, and we had to pay Brian and Brian.
But if the board wants to get top dollar for it, then certainly you can track it.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying I would like, I'd like to know that we got what we should get for it, and not say special to the church, because it is what they want. You see what I'm saying?
No, what I said was that the board can look at the appraisal.
Right.
And they can independently decide. I don't think that appraisal's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mean, I don't explain-
They can use their knowledge of land transactions, they can talk to friends, they can get somebody to do things, and decide that a fair value is-
Right.
Whatever.
I have a que- James, you have a question?
Have, have any of you been talking about this for a few months now?
Yeah.
I didn't know anybody up there before, I didn't know, that's the only person really got a valid use of it.
Yeah, honestly, when I looked at it, I thought it would be worth like twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars.
That's what, I mean, that's what I was thinking, I said, less than five thousand dollars.
Right.
Well, has, has anyone from the church, representing the church, made an offer, bidding that?
No, this started out with, uh, Pastor, um, Glenn Harable reached out to me, and I went several months ago, and went and looked at it, and really, I, I told him, I said, "Glenn, I'll be honest with you, this, I don't see, this is not any use to the town." I said, "You know, we'll start the process and see what we have to do, and it's, I'm sorry it's taken so long to do that." But, you know, seems like nothing but is passing, and you deal with doing things like this. But I said, "Look, I, I'll be honest with you, I hope the weekday they can give it to y'all," so nothing else. Because the town is just a liability for us sitting there, it's growing up, it's just scrub brush, it's got a ditch in it a little bit, like you said, and just- But for what they wanna do to reach, to be a, a, a plus for that little community there around Wall Circle, I think it would be a plus for them to have that, because they do have a good ministry there for our town and our community. And I, whatever we can do to make that as easy on them as we can, I want to try to do that, so, uh, that's my, that's my stance.
The biggest thing is, is there's no access, is there, I mean, nobody else can access it, really. And they can probably go legally and try to get access, but-
I mean, to correct you, unless they ac- accept, accessed it from the sides and the back of existing town property.
Right.
Saying everything all the way around that.
Yeah.
How do y'all feel like for twenty-two thousand dollars on the board?
Negative.
I don't think so.
I'm thinking ten percent of that is pretty good.
Might be.
What, ten percent of that? Ten percent of what she said.
I will ask, I will ask council. Council, what, what, what do you, in your opinion, to- Is this something that we just need to maybe come up with a price here tonight, and maybe see if it will pass the muster of any kind of-
But you have to make, you have to make it available, even though it's-
That's not being-
Council said, uh, council-
I didn't hear that.
Council basically said-
No, I don't think you have to advertise everything for bids.
Okay.
There's big, big-ticket items you do, but not everything.
I didn't hear you-
Well, my, I said, big-ticket items, you gotta advertise those things, to make sure you get-
Big-ticket bids.
Seventy-seven dollars.
Lot of money. Seventy-seven dollars. Man, I think, actually, you know, if, if you could get a committee or something to, to sit down, because I believe you need to document why you think the bid's not right, and, and what you've done to investigate values and things on your own. And then you can come back and, and kind of make an offer to them, what you wanted to sell it to them for.
Does that sound satisfactory to you?
Absolutely.
I just don't want some, I guess in the sense of mine is, I don't want to put it out there, somebody buy it, and then they turn around and tell them, "We're gonna sell it to you for twenty-two thousand dollars," is that what it works, you know what I mean? That's my word. I mean, and somebody might do that.
I don't think you have to worry about that, because we can, we can just-
I think we're gonna stay-
Buy the lease, set a price, and then say, "This is what we'll take for it, and if the church chooses to accept it, then the church has it. If not, we still own it and we're not no foul."
Right.
Um, is that correct, council?
Right. Because it's the board that has the decision.
I'll buy it for five hundred dollars and give it to them.
Pardon?
I'll buy it for five hundred dollars and give it to them.
Hey, I'm with that guy.
I get the twenty-two thousand dollars right off.
Good coming, but, uh, so what I'm hearing, we'll, we'll, again-
I like what he said, like a committee that looks at it, just look at it, come up with a, maybe bring it up next.
Okay, and we'll have, we'll put that, make sure we have that on the agenda later, when we, we do our due diligence on what we can legally do and feel comfortable that we can do. And James, if you'll relay that, Pastor Harable, appreciate it.
I will, thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to number fifteen, discussion of public auction of city-owned properties. That's just, just information, the date of that's going to auction is?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, it'd be auction be here.
Be noon.
Be here at noon, so if you're interested in buying one of these properties, please show up, and we will hook you up.
Okay.
We'll get you lined up. Okay, that was just for information. Number sixteen, uh, I need, I, I, we have one position that's short on, on board of adjustment, and we need to feel this to get our, our board of adjustment to full compliance with, uh, with the law. And tonight, I'd like to appoint, and with approval of the board, I'd like to appoint David Knapp to, uh, to be in that position, to fill that, fill the person for the board of adjustment. So, I would like to ask the council, if they, if they have any questions to me about this appointment, I'll be glad to take those down. Any questions? And I hear most will accept that appointment.
Take it.
Motion made by Alderman Pro, if I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, thank you all for coming tonight, we appreciate it, I hear most of you.
Make the motion.
Most of you made it. The quickest bid in ever.